Move on with our evening. Not, no, not you, Chief. You're, you're last, last and will stay last. For discussion items, we're going to go with the number three, former police department redevelopment merge, Brent Dahlstrom. No, we don't, we don't want to work session, making sure.
Brent Dahlstrom, Merge Urban Development. Mayor, thank you so much for letting us get on a little early. We have a little iffy weather heading back, so we really appreciate that. Here before, to give a little bit of an update, it's been quite a few months since we were here last. We've been working with city staff on the development agreement. Hopeful to be on for the, for consideration to put on the agenda in a week, I believe. And then we'll be, and hopefully have that development agreement up for a vote here at the end of the month or early in February, so. Since the last time we saw, we've been working on that a lot. We, there were some cleanup items that we, since we're going to be taking care of the demolition of the building, we did a lot of different testing and some, got some different quotes for contractors. We found that underneath the sidewalk is almost a 10-foot hole today. So, found a lot of interesting things that we just need to take care of and we're excited to do that as soon as we get the development agreement approved. But, could just go briefly through the, where we're at and if, I know we have a couple new council members, congratulations on the appointment. And so, we thought it'd be good to just give a brief update since the last time. So, Merge, a little bit about for us, we, we design buildings built for people. And so, so, for so long developments and, you know, since the car, been kind of built around the car and. For us, you know, before the car, a lot of developments were done in the urban core and built around, walking around, biking around and, and really, we're just seeing the excitement and the reinvigoration of downtown urban cores. And that's the type of housing and product that we're, that we're bringing to areas all around the Midwest. Myself, enjoy who's here tonight, just a little bit about us, but been developing for over 10 years now. And, but the Opportunity Zone tax law was put in place in 2017. And so, we've done one project that's almost complete, another project that's underway in Wisconsin. We'll be doing five projects in 2020. And so, we just, we're, we're focused on opportunities of development in the Midwest. So, here's eight of our projects and project sites, right now, in Iowa and in Wisconsin. And in the future years, be in Minnesota and South Dakota, but Iowa's my hometown and so, it's my passion and to continue to develop in Iowa. And Joy's from Wisconsin, and so that's why you see us in both those states. Here's a project that, it's much further along than this today, but this was one of the first Opportunity Zone projects in the, in the United States. It was nominated by Forbes as one of the catalytic Opportunity Zone projects in the United States. But, we'll be bringing that project to its completion here in a couple of months. But, has a lot of similarities to the project that we're looking to do in, in your town here. This is a project in Iowa, they, they brought back the workforce housing tax credit, which is a big reason why we're here and working throughout, throughout the state. The governor put that back into effect and it has special impact on counties that are, that are your size. And so, that is one of the things in the development agreement is that we'll be going after that award. July 1st is when the IEDA expects to open up that application process. So, we already have the application ready and as soon as that period opens up, it is competitive. So, the, there's 10 million awarded every year. We've been very successful in the past at, at getting these awards. But, that's a big part of, you know, bridging that gap between developing here rather than developing in Des Moines or somewhere else that has higher rents than, than what would be here today. So, we were able to get it in Sioux City because there was a special allocation for the flood. So, Sioux City and Davenport, we were successful on being awarded both the awards. Here's a project that has, is just getting started and just talk, just wanted to show a couple news articles. We, we try to work with first floor tenants to really activate that ground plane. In this case, it was a grocery store. They've been trying to find, to raise money for the co-op and raise members for over 10 years. And is exciting to be at that, that big announcement there. If you don't know about the Opportunity Zone program, what, what it was for is exactly what we're here in, in, with you today is getting outside capital to work in places that maybe hasn't been here before. You've had a lot of great people within your town invest. The Opportunity Zone said, hey, there's a lot of these towns that aren't getting the outside capital. And these big towns are getting all the outside capital, so let's try to even that playing field and get outside capital to work in your town. And so, that, that, that got us here with that. So, it is doing its job. We work with Slingshot Architecture out of Des Moines. They're fantastic. A lot of the work that you see in downtown Des Moines was designed by them. Over the past, you know, 10 to 15 years, they've done countless projects. The first one that was really ever done after, in, in the early 2000s where they actually took the first units back and made them residential was done by their, their original partner, so. We spent a long time and we've been, this, I think nearly a year ago since we were here, we, just like them, we, we've taken on their mantra of really stepping back and figuring out what is needed in your town. We, we don't really design the same building twice. And it's always for, for the specific place and time and the need for, for your town. And so, both our architect and us take that approach. So, with the Opportunity Zone, you have both the developer and you also have the capital partner. Our capital partner is out of Chicago, Sky Deck, and they've just been fantastic. And we, we make all decisions together and they've been with us and beside us for every decision. So, just a little bit about them and, and happy to share that. We showed this a while ago and this, it's hard to see, but this is really at the ground plane level. The building's going to be oriented so that the vast majority of the units overlook the water, which we're excited. You really get above that, that first floor and you start to have, there's a deck that overlooks and an area that really all those units, except a few of them per floor, will, will have a direct view out to, to the water. What the building's going to look like, what we've come up with is, is this right here. You'll have that masonry on the, the first floor and then top four floors of metal paneling that you'd see in a lot of new buildings. And there'll also be a lot of glass on that first floor to really, for that retail space. And we're working with numerous tenants throughout the state of Iowa. But, hopefully, maybe there's that business here locally that's looking for a new space or that just hasn't quite got started. And we'll, we'll go into that phase as soon as the development agreement, or if it would get approved, we'd, we'd start looking for those retail tenants. This is the backside, so, you know, this is what's going to be facing the water. And it's exciting to get all these units looking out that way. We just put the agreement overview, if you had something, if, if we wanted to talk about it. But, we had a planning option and we wanted to make sure to get a development agreement on her before a certain date. And so, we've been working to, to meet, to meet that. And anyway, this is my contact information and love to take some questions tonight. Excited to be here, excited to work on this project with you.
Council, questions for Brent?
How many units? I know you said, but.
Oh, boy, we didn't put that up there. It's right around 60 units, I believe, right in that area, yeah.
Did you say 60?
60, yeah.
And then, for the retail space, will you tailor make that for the square footage that they want? Or will they, will you already be designated and then they go in for?
Right, so we have room to, to make that space a little bit smaller, a little bit bigger. We'll have a maximum it can be, but that space can be divided up in multiple tenants if, if there wasn't.
I can think of some retail that would love to go in there.
We would love, love to hear from you and them, we really would.
Are these all market-based?
Yes, this is all market-based, that's correct.
Now, if I remember right too, we, we discussed, because, and you've kind of said that in your opening, you're not concerned about parking at all for your tenants, is that correct?
No, so you have some various parking areas throughout this and by this, this building. So, when we looked around at possible sites in town, we spent a day with, with the team here. And we liked how this one had parking around it. So, we all probably can assume the cost of parking on a building, especially in the core, is, is extremely high. You'd pay almost $30,000 a stall. So, we, we do try to look for areas that if the tenant would have a car, that it would be nearby and hopefully paying city revenue for that.
Anybody else have any questions for Brent?
Is that backside an alley right now? Is that facing the gas station?
Yeah, there's an alley there, but I don't think it goes the whole way through.
Okay, so I was curious about the deck that you wanted to build there. There's a wall that overlooks a business and then you would build the deck up and?
Yeah, the deck, we, we're showing it to make sure there's still to be some survey work done to make sure it's possible. If not, we'd just have it so the, the decks of all those units would overlook. You can get rid of the deck portion of it.
Can you tell me about the mixed use of the building? Are these all two-bedroom, three-bedroom efficiencies?
Yeah, so studio one-bedrooms and two-bedrooms.
This, my next question would probably be for you, Jim. There was a, what were the provisions as far as the teardown of the building? We talked about that at some point in time?
Well, so we've had a few different discussions on this over the last few years. We were originally looking to do a demo on this and we had envisioned paying for that with TIF funds. And during that process, you have somebody in the audience, Zach, who got to work on that, came to us and talked about wanting to, let's step back and see if we can't find a way to, to do a redevelopment on this site. We were looking at folks who were, had an interest in either redeveloping, rehabbing the structure as is or, as the case here, doing the demo and a reconstruction at the site. As Merge has looked at their options for this, this was the one that, I mean, the viable option that we had that, that, that came back. That we had others, I think Zach, that expressed interest, but they weren't in terms of what we were looking to see based off of previous, some below. And, and nobody was committed to doing anything. This, this proposal that you had before you, I mean, Merge is asking for $450,000 for a demolition. That towards the demolition costs, they're, I assume, looking to demo both buildings on the site?
Yeah, demo both, and then part of that money is to backfill the, the gaps in the, the subsurface conditions.
And we had done no actual, we hadn't gone out for bids. I don't know if you have or not, but we hadn't gone out for bids. But, we had an idea it would be 500,000 or less. We do have, had, would have had one more complicating factor in that if we were doing the demolition and that we would be trying to demo the one building while maintaining a common wall.
Which could have posed a lot of problems.
Yes, and so we, that was part of the recognition of what we saw happening with that. If you look in the proposed development agreement, this is one that Merge has actually done the majority of the, the legwork on. And it looks remarkably similar to some of the development agreements they've done in other communities.
Very similar.
If you were to go and look at what they've done in Dubuque, I just, I think, not, not Eau Claire. I saw a couple of towns in, in Wisconsin that you've done some as well.
Yeah, Oshkosh and Stevens Point, I think, has some similarities there too.
Yeah, so you, this is a, a similar format. They've done good quality work. What, what's in there though in regards to the building, I mean, they, this has a September 4 closing date?
That's correct, I believe.
So, it's, it's envisioned around the idea of going after those state credits, making sure that you've gotten everything and taken care of to get all the, any concerns that you would have done. You've already done a lot of due diligence on this.
Right, and part of the, in the conversation with the IEDA, to find out what's going to score well, it's going to, they believe there's going to be a portion of it for opportunity zones, if you are in the zone. Are you build-ready? And are, is, are you, do you have everything lined up from the city as far as the development agreement? Do you have your financing and your money in place? So, getting all of that done now puts us in a position to hopefully score well there in July.
And they've already taken care of, I mean, you're still online with everything they need for the adjoining building to make that all happen.
That's correct.
So, this does envision that that $450,000 would not be paid until after demolition occurred.
That's correct.
I think it, I didn't read the change that was made this last week to try to incorporate some of the concerns that we had just to make sure that we didn't have a transfer of property and then nothing happened.
Right.
So, we had some, some language added for that that satisfied Jo, Bob Johnston. So, in terms of that part, and I didn't know exactly where in that language you're asking your question, but I hit that.
I just remembered we had a discussion about there was, that, you know, there was going to be some, either way, some demo cost to us. And the great thing here is that we're not just demoing a building, we're actually looking at putting a building up. So, very excited about that, so.
That's great. The other part of the requests that they have here is a 10-year TIF rebate. That's 100% of the rebatable taxes. One of the discussions that we had staff-wise with, with them was looking at the existing tax abatement, just a traditional tax abatement. We, the residential, we have the seven-year 100% in sliding for the last three years. And the commercial space is more of either a 10-year sliding scale or a three-year 100%, is that right?
Doesn't this building fall in the zone where we provide 100% on the increment anyways?
Where we can, but if you do that, it's, you have to do it through a development agreement such as this.
So, that we already have a 100% abatement, abatement agreement in place?
We have, I don't know if we've, do we have anything that we've offered that on? Well, we do, it's not for housing. We've done that out with, it's all project-dependent. We did it with the development of the.
I thought we had a South Hill Downtown agreement in place.
No.
That's the 10-year with the seven-year 100% and then the 75, 50, 25 on residential only.
Yeah, that's, that's the tax abatement.
Okay, I thought we had a rehab thing that we did for certain zones, but I'm confusing, I have something else.
It's about, it's about a hundred block area.
And this falls in that area?
This falls in that area.
That's what I was getting, alright.
Their, their choice is on the TIF rebate, which, I mean, that's their calculation. It's not a tremendous amount different from our perspective from the abatement, but they're the ones who have to crunch the numbers and know which is going to give them the better deal. And I, I don't think of this as being out of line for what it's accomplishing. Specifically, it's, we're going to be, if we were doing the demo the way that we had set up to do it, we were going to end up with an empty lot with no development occurring. This is a much better win for us than that. The terms that are in here don't, they don't bother me in terms of being out of line for, for what the alternatives are. And again, if you were to look at some of the agreements that they have in other places, Dubuque specifically, that the terms are fairly, fairly similar.
Yeah, and the, really the word at this state allows us to actually ask for less than we would in other areas. So, in Oshkosh, for example, it's 27 years of no taxes compared to 10 of no taxes here. So, really, the state's allowing us to bridge that gap so that we can ask for less. And that's exactly the same as both Sioux City and Davenport for, and we like to be, let you know that.
As far as a process it has to occur, in order to do a TIF arrangement, we, we, for a development such as this, we have to go through a public hearing process, provide 30 days for others to have the opportunity to, to submit comparable proposals. We would put some minimum characteristics on that. I would assume that to give a little bit of flexibility, 4 million, in the neighborhood of $4 million minimum investment, a minimum of 50 units to be created, residential units to be created for comparable proposals. And it would allow others to be able to submit something. It's something that, when we go through this, it's just one of the steps we have to do. It gives you the option then, at the end of that 30 days, to hold that public hearing, which would be the first meeting in March. Is that the second or third?
Second.
Second. And you're then doing qualitative reviews of any other proposals that have come in. And you, you, you can look at what's the best option for the community. At this point, this is a great option for the community and the, the work that they've done on other projects fits in. I mean, they, they give them, give themselves a pretty good position given the framework of what they've done in other places.
I would agree. Anybody, anybody have any other questions for Brent?
Brent, you said you hail from Iowa.
I do, see, I was born in Waterloo, I live in Cedar Falls, so I didn't make it too far. But, yeah, I've spent half my life in Waterloo and half in Cedar Falls.
You keep building in Burlington, we'll give you a key to the city.
Hey, we will accept that, yeah. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, welcome. Okay, since we're going out of order, we're going to go ahead and do a favor to all three presenters today. Airport, you're in, report and budget, Mary Beard, you're up next.
Well, thank you and good evening. My name is Mary Beard, the Airport Director, Southeast Bay Area Regional Airport. And with me tonight, I have Charlie Walsh, who is the Board Chairman, and John Schultz. Both of them are representatives from the city of Burlington. Mick Fletcher is from the city of West Burlington and Dan Wiedemeyer is from Des Moines County. So, I appreciate the opportunity to come in and give an annual update about what has been going on at the airport and what's going to be going on here in the next year. So, some pretty exciting stuff. Eric's helping me here with the PDF, can I do that? Perfect. So, why an Airport Authority? Well, in 1996, the city formed the Airport Authority. And what that allows us to do is all three member municipalities contribute some funds to the airport. And then that allows us, the Airport Authority, to operate the, the airport in a safe and efficient manner, utilizing resources from all three of those entities in the best, best manner that we see. Our airport provides for business and professional transportation to affordable air service and connectivity to the national air transportation system. It is indeed an economic growth indicator and an economic, whoo, excuse me, let me start over here. It is an economic generator and a tool to help attract and retain businesses to the community and provides jobs. And then according to the U.S. Department of Commerce, the multiplier effect on jobs and income is that for every $1 spent on aviation-related activity, approximately $2.50 comes back to our local economy. So, travelers that come through, staying at our hotels, our restaurants, buying fuel. When we have projects, of course, we have construction folks, engineers that are in town doing that workforce as well. The most recent economic impact study by the state of Iowa, which was done probably in 2008, nine, 10, time flies. They will be updating that, but in two, in that time, 10,000 or $10 million was the economic impact to our community. And I always like to say the airport is, provides, a mile of highway takes you a mile, but a mile of, of runway takes you anywhere. So, I think that's a pretty cool quote. Aviation destinations, I just want to show this map and as folks fly in and out of our community, that's some other places, locations in the, across the U.S. where they are coming from or flying to. And the picture below that represents a charter flight that came in as well as a cargo flight. So, that was bringing in parts for one of our local manufacturers, manufacturers. Those are, that's the type of aircraft activity we have at the airport on a regular basis. Services that we provide at the airport, Jet Air is our fixed base operator and they do charter services. They do flight training, they have fuel sales, aircraft sales, air medical and air ambulance. They do aircraft maintenance. We have overnight freight of critical manufacturing parts and military aircraft. So, Jet Air takes care of all of the general aviation operations for us. The commercial operations are done by Air Choice One. That's the airline that serves St. Louis, Chicago and Minneapolis. They participate in the essential air service program through the USDOT. So, what that means is that's a program that's provided to us and we watch that program from the federal government to make sure that we are under their subsidy caps and that we are doing everything so that we may maintain that program for our community. Commercial operations, so all of those Air Choice One operations provide for about 31% of our operating revenues. So, that's important that we keep that income coming and that we support the airline for our community. Air Choice One was awarded a four-year contract through January of 2022, so that still is in place and, and still looks like we should be able to hold that contract in place. Air Choice One, one of their, a couple of things they're doing right now is they are adding a Beechcraft 1900 to their aircraft fleet, which means that that would hold 19 passengers and not being used in our community at this point in time. But, they are looking at doing some charter operations out of Burlington. So, when that happens, hopefully we'll be seeing the Beechcraft 1900 fly in and out. Other airport activities, the AVIS car rental. We have the Federal Aviation Administration Philtech onsite. Transportation security, of course, is onsite. We have the Joint Use Fire Station, which is really helpful as we try to provide those fire services and, and safety for the traveling public. Civil Air Patrol Chapter and we have an Experimental Aircraft Association. That's the, those guys are the general aviation pilots. We're very passionate about what they do and they try to share that information and love for aviation with others in the community. In 2019, we served 15,666 passengers commercially. We implanted 8,093. And that number is very important to us because if we implant 8,000 passengers in a year, we receive $600,000 in federal subsidies or federal grants to improve the infrastructure of the airport. Previous, prior to 2018 and 2019, that amount of money was $150,000. So, when we tried to do a project at the airport, that money really did not go very far. So, this will help tremendously. We'll have about $1.2 million in the bank to do a apron, or I mean, to do a taxiway rehab in the next couple of years. General aviation operations totaled 1,654 and then commercial operations 3,335 for a total of just shy of 5,000 operations throughout the year. Little bit of a decrease over our previous years. We, we can contribute that a lot to our January weather last year and the icing that we had. And then we had a problem with the, some equipment, some federal aviation equipment. So, the aircraft could not fly in at that point in time. 2019 state projects that we completed, so state-funded projects, annually, the state provides us with $60,000. We matched that 20%, but that is for marketing of Air Choice One. So, they are very much in tune to helping the state of Iowa market commercial air service for all their communities, actually eight communities. And then terminal improvements, we've done about $310,000 worth of terminal improvements. That be, include lighting, windows and siding this year. In 2020, airport projects slated, the same $60,000 for marketing. Then we have a pavement project that will be happening around some hangers to the tune of about $130,000. And our big project that we've been talking about for a while is the federal aviation construction, reconstruction of our main primary runway 1836. And that's a $12 million project. So, in 2019 and 2020, we have federal, state, local airport infrastructure investments of about $12.7 million. Our operating budget, I include just a little snapshot of our operating budget every year for your, your review. And our net income is always in the red. I always show that in the red. And, and the reason I do that is I want to have everyone be aware that the contributions from the cities in Des Moines County really help us make part of our operating budget. And then the remaining of that goes towards our capital improvement project. So, as I talk about projects that are happening at the airport and the match dollars that we have to come up with, a lot of the federal dollars is a 90, 10% match for us. So, that's a remaining fund, that $58,000, we put that in the bank. And when we have to come up with match dollars, that's the money that we use for that. Have to save that up for several years. Couldn't, couldn't quite save enough for this big runway project, hence why we were here in 2014, 15, 16, talking about our runway project. So, this $12 million project, we need a match of 10%, $1.2 million. And we've talked with all the entities about that for several years. So, on this page, I wasn't sure how everyone was doing their budgets, but when we first started talking about it, it's about the box in the center there where we talked about the Burlington would match, help us with that match at 75% of $513,000. And then in 2018, when the engineers actually did the updated cost to the run, or to the project, that came in at 11.3. Then we were asking the city for an additional $99,000. We actually went out to. We actually went out to bid in June, and Monats received that bid, and it came in at 12.1. So we are here to ask for an additional $55,000 from the city of Burlington. West Burlington, we asked for about $9,000. Des Moines County, almost $10,000. And then the airport's going to add in an additional $10,000. So the bottom line there, total contribution for this project is about $669,000 from the city of Burlington, 107 from West Burlington, 115 from Des Moines County, and the airport's got $327,000. Then our capital improvements for the next five years after that, 2021 through 2026. This sheet just lists out the capital improvement projects. We all, we will have the air service development funds every year, as far as I know. But in 2021, rehabilitate taxiway Charlie will be our next big project at $1.5 million. We have some more pavement on taxiway D in 2022. We'll continue some terminal upgrades until we have done the inside as well as the outside. At this point in time, I guess I'm not really here to ask for any other funds for those capital improvements in '21 through '26, but just continue to help with the runway reconstruction project. So that's really all I have tonight. If anyone has any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Questions?
If I go get my airplane, or not my airplane, if I go get an airplane with a friend, do you calculate those numbers? Is there a way to calculate those numbers?
You mean as far as our landings, takeoffs?
Yeah.
Yeah, right. So the numbers that we have are combined from Jet Air Fixed Space Operator. We ask for them to log that information on a daily basis. In addition to that, anyone who files a flight plan. That's, was more what was being shown on the U.S. map, because it's easier to capture that information.
But if I go get an airplane with a friend, and we fly down to Quincy and have lunch and come back, the two people on board, that's not, that number's not captured?
Oh, for our deployments?
Right.
No, that number is not. It has to be a chartered, a chartered plane.
In order to count towards your number.
Right. So Jet Air is able to give us some numbers if they have, oh gosh, a good example would be Western Illinois brought their sport teams in a couple of different times. So those are actually charters, and they can count those numbers.
Okay.
In regards to the requests that you have before you, we had borrowed a $613,000 lat in the spring for this project, based off of the requests that they were making last year. We do not have a budgeted source for the additional, asking for $55,000. We'll have to look at how we can accommodate that. It might be needing to make an adjustment in what we're doing towards other CIP items from what's been presented, because I don't, I just don't have that.
Yeah, don't have it in there. Okay. Well, we'll be looking at the CIP later tonight. Any other questions on that?
That project is actually slated for March, to begin in March, be completed by October. We are having a public input meeting or education meeting February 6 at the public library. And, because there will be a lot of effect on traffic around the city, so.
What time do you know? What time your meeting is, February 6?
6:30. Oops, I didn't write that down. 6:00 or 6:30, is it?
Six o'clock.
Since, since project costs came in higher, does it make sense to try and rebid it?
Um, no. We had five bidders, and actually that was the lowest bid. I think the next high was 15, 15.3, 15.6.
Anything else? Thanks for your presentation. We'll see what we can do.
All right, thank you.
Alrighty, then we're gonna move on, and we'll go ahead and do the American Queen docking agreement with Chelsea from CBB, please.
Before I start with that, I do have a few community ideas.
Got mine in the mail yesterday.
Thank you, folks.
Chelsea LaRude, Executive Director at the Greater Burlington Convention and Visitors Bureau. And Jim and I have done a lot of discussion to try to make sure we're bringing you guys the right documents. American Queen Steamboat Company has come back, or come to us and want to renew their five-year agreement that they currently had in place. So that inspired us to kind of look at the American Queen document and go back to the Viking document. Also go back and look, you know, Viking does want a long-term agreement with us as well. And so what we came up with, Viking wanted 20 years, and instead of signing 20 years at a time, we kind of came up with maybe five years with the option to renew. So we've gone back and forth on language with the city attorney. Couple of things to note, the agreement with American Queen does not include any money back to the city, whereas the Viking agreement does. And the Viking is proposing to pay a dollar per passenger. So that'd be something for you guys to consider as a difference between the two agreements. Also trying to work out some language on, right now, there's no conflicting dates with the two companies wanting to be here at the same time, but kind of what would we do if that situation were to arise in the future? So those are kind of some things that we've thought through on the agreements.
The only question I had was, in thinking of that same example, if we did have a date where the two boats needed to be here at the same time, is the dock that we're gonna build gonna be big enough to facilitate both, start both?
I've heard that it should be able to.
Okay, so if we run into that problem, we should theoretically have space to put both boats there. Then it's just a matter of, do we have room downtown to support?
That's also if you do get the Boating Infrastructure Grant, which we haven't, we still haven't gotten even the planning phase dollars. And getting that initial piece done doesn't guarantee that we get the construction dollars on it.
Right, but everything we're doing right now is assuming that that's gonna be the case, right?
Well, it is, but we will, we will amend what we do if we don't get them. I mean, that's, that's $1.7 million. We're not in a position to move forward otherwise with that dock. However, even without building that dock through the Boating Infrastructure Grant, we still talked about the ability to construct a second tie-up a little bit farther south towards the auditorium to accommodate if we needed to.
I would have to know, we would have to know the dimensions of the Viking ship first. But similar to what we have near the port, it's a gate. We have fence system further down. We could simply make that into a gate. There would need to be some sort of mooring point, and I don't know the distance that the boats need in between each, but you could accommodate it. It may cost a little bit of money to do that, but I don't think it would be overly difficult.
Well, Chelsea, I thought I read somewhere in that proposal that the American Queen would want priority as far as where they normally dock if both boats were here at the same time. My question would be if Viking is actually, and even though it's just a dollar a passenger, they're still paying more, and they're wanting a long-term agreement. You know, how do you determine, how do we determine who trumps who if they want to come the same day?
And I've kind of tried to think about this, and I think first come, first served. Who gives me their schedule first and who's kind of locked in first?
Is that kind of the language that Patrick was?
I think so.
Was proposing on it too. And so we're right now, our city attorney's been in communication with you and I, trying to get some language that we can get into both of those and go back to both entities and trying to make sure that we don't present one or the other in a way that you can't, you can't somehow get them to mesh. So you don't have a finalized agreement in here. This is what we have presented. Just knowing that we need to make sure that the two can work together.
Right. Chelsea, is that?
Again, I guess a part of it, I guess we want to make sure that we, that you're okay with what we're doing. I didn't assume that you weren't, but we don't want to have it come for actual action until we know that we have a finalized copy that works.
My question was, is that $1 per person customary that other cruise lines?
It's not customary with American Queen, but it is something that Viking has been putting in place with all of their communities they're docking with. So I have a feeling that American Queen will have to maybe reconsider it as they're moving forward.
Okay, well, anybody else have any other questions for Chelsea? So we're, the, once we get word back from the attorney, then this will be brought back up?
We, I think we have some proposed language that you can take to, back to American Queen, don't you?
Um, I think so.
I haven't really read through the stuff that he sent over the weekend, but.
Yeah, I need to go back and look.
But we won't bring it back until we've, he's got some language or thoughts on how to go back to them to accommodate the two entities. We need to get them to buy off on it.
Okay.
We'll bring it back if we can get them to buy off on it.
Viking was comfortable with the agreement I sent on Friday, so I'm not sure if it's changed since Friday, but they were.
What a wonderful problem to have. Two boat companies want to bring people to our town and spend money.
I know, right?
I'm sure you'll work it out. So we'll get, we'll work it out. Does anybody else have any other questions for?
Good.
Good?
All right, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Chelsea.
All right, now we'll go back to the proposed regular agenda. First on the list is proclamation of retirement for Terry Norton Records clerk. Look at that, 37 years, woo, that's outstanding, 37 years. Number two is resolution of warranty contract for the north end of the depot, and that would be Mr. McGregor.
That's actually, just following up on the memo that you had in here. You know, these discussions began last fall. Linda, you got to meet with the senior center for quite a few months as a representative and looking at concerns, and you're working with them on what are some potential options for what could be done to meet some of their needs. Some different options that were looked at were space in the auditorium as well as a depot. And when we had a chance for them to take a look, and they at least were, the board was amenable to the idea of moving forward at the depot location. That was what got presented to the council at the end of the year, and the council at that point authorized spending about $35,000 to get work done to that space to accommodate them and move forward. Based on the decision that the council had made at that point, this wouldn't have to come back to council for approval of these quotes. We have the authorization that we needed, but I wanted, we wanted to make sure that that we're still in line to be moving forward. As we've had discussions that have gone on, I know that there have been other thoughts that have been raised on the senior center itself, but also congregate meals has looked at the idea of, can we do, this would be a good location if the seniors are gonna be down here. We could make this work for what we're trying to accomplish. We could actually serve meals at this location too.
That's correct. There's a grant out, and they haven't heard confirmation on that yet.
So this.
They've been awarded that or not.
So they see this as a good partnership to work off, to springboard off what the senior center is doing in a way to advance what they're doing for senior meals.
At the depot?
Both their delivery program and serving them at the depot.
So are they, that, I read that with interest. So is, does that mean they would be serving out of the old diner area, or?
I think the, at least on a short-term basis, they're looking at the diner area. And we talked, and I don't remember, Zach, if I had you on that, that we were looking at for, if they're to do some what-ifs over the long haul, would there be, would there be the ability to go after some additional funds to do some redevelopment of this, some space in the southern half to accommodate, accommodate what they're wanting to do in the future? There is CEBG funds that is available specifically for this type of program, so it potentially could happen in the future.
The South End has lots of potential. If you've ever been to a KSI Center for Active Seniors Incorporated in Davenport, it has a beautiful senior facility, complete with eatery and hair salon and billiards, workout center, congregate meals. It is like a mall for seniors, all under one roof, and it is really sharp. And I envision that somewhere down the line, we might be able to do something like that with that South End.
So, so that's something for the future. However, right now, what we have, we did go out looking for quotes from three different companies. Frank Millard and SNG did submit bids for the work. Frank Millard at 34.5, and then SNG was a little bit higher, $36,023. They were doing some work, including raising the door and frame between the dining and kitchen to even that out. Doing some infill floor of the kitchen and behind the counter to match the elevation of the dining area. Epoxy coat the concrete infill with flakes to try to match the existing terrazzo. Frame walls beneath the countertops on existing concrete curb in the middle of the dining area. Put some cabinets under the straight wall countertop that's open-faced, and then cabinets with doors in the south end near the existing display window. Do laminate countertops, some, it included carpentry labor, and then plumbing for a sink. Depending on what happened for congregate meals, and that's part of where they were going after some grant funding, they would have a little bit higher kitchen needs that might have to be accommodated in there. And that, I think that was basically kind of the funding that they were after with that small grant that they were going after. However, I think that they can work off of the equipment that's in there, because I don't think they're looking to do all meal prep onsite. They're looking at that more as a serving spot.
They might actually have it catered in, so there's a lot of different options they were looking at.
If we are moving forward, they want to have, as, over the next few weeks, to have some ongoing discussions about what could potentially be done there too.
I haven't been in that South, South End for a while. I did tour a while ago. It is huge. But is it, it is not like destroyed?
It's just, it's rough, is what it is.
It's rough, okay, all right.
Instead of looking at this as a temporary solution, does it make sense to look at the south portion and figure out if we try to put a CIP item?
It's a.
Redoing the first floor of that? I mean, square footage wise, there's a lot more square footage, it'd be much more easy to secure. I walked through it probably 10 months ago, and it is very rough. But how much more would we spend to redo that space?
I wouldn't know what kind of figure to put on it. A general figure that last time I was looking at was over 200 a square foot on average for remodel, but.
Oh, that sounds expensive.
If you were to just do the first level, you could get by without having an elevator in there. That's what gets expensive when you go up. There is asbestos and lead paint abatement that would have to be done. But then all the utilities would have to be run through the whole south half, meaning electrical, water, HVAC system.
That's kind of what drove the cost on the great room area. I mean, that project was a $600,000 project to do the, to get the HVAC and all the the electrical upgraded and, yeah, and the, well, the roof was $120 in and of itself.
Okay, well, the reason I was asking that is I just jumped on their board. Their board, I'm definitely getting mixed signals from them. The board wants to move, but they're worried that their membership doesn't. They are having a vote, a membership-wide vote on the 23rd. I think Linda and I are gonna go for info, just give them information. So if this went to, let's see, that would, that would put this ahead of that. You know, I don't know how you guys feel, but I'm wondering if we could wait one more city council before we approve it. That way we could get their opinion and go from there.
I think their input is important, but there's a lot of reasons why I'm not gonna vote in favor of this outside of that input. Again, I've had feedback from some of them, and I, just like you, John, I've gotten mixed signals. There's a lot of people that are part of the membership that aren't in favor of doing this. There's a lot of people who have supported the building and its longevity and the rehab of it that aren't in favor of having them there. And I feel like this is something where if we were to take a step back and take some time to try and figure out what other alternatives exist, like researching the possibility of redoing the other portions of that building, that we could probably come up with a better alternative than the one we've got in front of us today.
Well, it would make sense with the milestones that they're gonna serve there, they would be, would work, the diner part would work.
But, but does that mean that they couldn't, couldn't do the exact same thing in the building that they're in right now?
That's, that's.
I just feel like we haven't asked enough questions yet to be able to figure out if this is the right move.
And they, they do have some questions about some of their equipment and how would we handle that. And I, I think part of that, I think part of that hesitancy is, you know, they, they need to get, I don't want, they, the communication amongst themselves. And I, I think part of that, I think part of that hesitancy is, uh, you know, they, they, they need to get, hmm, I don't want, they, the communication amongst themselves hasn't been as strong as it needs to be to get the will of the group. Uh, what I'd be worried about is we go ahead and do this, and then we end up just the board down there and everybody else quits coming, and then it's a, a, a problem as far as money.
And, and when we voted on this, with, with the old, with the council made up as it was prior to the two new council members, I was the dissenting no, I believe. Uh, or the lone no, but and the reason I stated then, I still would state today is when we made the investment to that portion of that building, we said we were going to invest in it with the purpose of putting another entity in there, like a restaurant or proprietor. That's not the case that, that we're doing today. So that's also another reason why I'm not in favor of doing it, so.
I'm not, I'm not saying whether I am or am not. I'm just wondering if we wouldn't want a little more input from the seniors and their membership after that, that twenty-third.
I think we, we do need that.
Do they need to go view the site again?
Uh, that could, that could be certainly something we could discuss.
I mean, I'm sure they've had the opportunity to do that by now.
Not the members, the general membership. The board has, the board has spent down in that spot.
So I, and there are some questions there. It's like, okay, what do they do with their pool table? What do they do with the tables and chairs? Talking to BRE, they, you know, if they had in a wedding or event, they said they would, they would tear, you know, move that stuff and put it back up. But I think we have some questions there that we need to get some answers to first before we put this on the council meeting. Uh, the other thing, I will tell you, when I was at their board meeting this last time, because the issue came up about their, their homegrown parking permit, I told them where I'm personally at on those parking permits, because if you remember, I had to ask for thirty at one point in time. I said, I'm thinking eight. Uh, they do not have the same needs for those or people making those up, because one group has already left and gone to the moose. So, you know, you know, I wasn't speaking for the council, I just said where I'm at. Uh, so I think they know that they're not going to be able, one, to use their homemade permits, and two, they're not going to get what they're looking for.
Still, Sid, I think, I think in the future, an opportunity is going to present itself that will be better than the one in front of us. And that may be, that may be six months from now, it might be three years from now. I feel like, like I said, there could be one of those other buildings that comes available in the community that is the perfect place, great parking, has the facilities and will require minimal investment, and maybe that doesn't happen, but I just feel like, well, what's in front of us today is not the right.
And the only thing I would say about that, and Linda, you know as well, financially, they're.
They're strapped.
They're, they're in trouble. Uh, and that's with someone, an anonymous donor paying five hundred their utility bill. And that was supposed to go six months, and it's been twelve months, going on, it's going on eighteen. So they're, they need to make some decisions. I, I would just like, I guess when I'm asking the council, I would like to get that input before we put this on the, for council vote next week. So it, it depends on where you guys are at on that. Uh, I'm not saying that we are or not.
Sounds like it's probably not going to pass, though it sounds like they're probably going to have to stay put where they're at, is what it sounds like.
The other question, bringing that up is.
It doesn't pass here.
What's their, what's their long-term commit, are, are, if we, if we, if they go to the depot, are they, are they going to be in a position, will they be able to stay there?
Well, potentially their costs would be considerably less.
Yeah.
Less, less rent, less heat, less overhead, maybe not even a person that has to maintain that spot being overseer. Plus, it's good eyes for the depot. I mean, against crime and stuff, you've got bodies in there, so it's not all bad having entities in there.
Well, I don't know if it's not, the only thing here, PT, I don't know if it's not going to pass here. I think there's still a will to do it here. I just, I would just like to have more information from them before we move forward. Because I'm, even if we pass it, my fear is if we pass it and then they say, because I've had some, we're not going to go there, we'll go back to our churches and that type of thing, and that we've spent the additional dollars.
And that's what I'm getting at, is we make a commitment. How committed are they to this?
That's, that's what.
That's, that's a, that's a big concern for me.
So anyway, if the group's willing, I'm, I'm, I'm just saying we table it till we get that information from them. We'll present that at the work session, then we'll put on the council meeting after that for approval. We're, we're not in a race, are we? On this bid, as far as getting it done? Nick?
The reason why I put it on the agenda was to make it look like I hadn't been doing anything. I had the numbers, I just knew that there was some talk going about maybe it wasn't the right move, and so I was like, well, what other way than to move it in front of city council to have an action taken? So if you're not concerned about moving, you can go back two weeks. It's just the communication then with the seniors and then with contractors.
I would like to be able to vote on it this way as a council, instead of just moving forward, because I know that we already voted to give you permission to do that. But I, I agree with John that we need to have their membership's input through their vote before we do that.
Yeah, ninety percent of them say no. We're doing a lot, a lot of moving or approving.
If fifty-one percent of them say no.
I kind of want to clarify on this too. This is not Nick's suggestion. In fact, from a staff perspective, we have done our best as this has come up over the last two years of, of talking about potential other sites. Linda, you've been working with them the last couple of years, and you've known the issues that they've had. You've talked about, what are we going to do to try to work with them? And we've, from a staff side, said, we don't want to be looking like we're trying to move them anywhere, or, or say that they're not welcome to be where they're at. We're not in a rush to see anything happen. It's more been driven from their checkbook.
Yeah.
And from then the council knowing where their checkbook is and needing to find a solution that helps them to keep from running out of funds, because they're not that far from that.
No, they're, they're close. So you're right, Jim, on that, so thank you for.
Yeah, so Nick and I have met with them at length, many meetings, and they've expressed that the funds are tight, that time was of the essence. So Nick, in his good heart, moved on this quickly, and the last meeting I had with them, I said, oh, it'll be at least three to six months before we're ready to move. And I called Nick and he says, I'm on top of this. We can do it in two months. And they got really nervous. What are we going to do with the bill, billards table? What are we going to do with the trophies? What are we going to do with the pictures? And they got really anxious, and I understand that moving is a very stressful time, and sometimes seniors don't want to move that quick, and they got nervous.
Sometimes I don't want to move that quick.
No, I don't want to either, but the, the fact of the matter, their checkbook is deciding.
Yeah, so we were trying to expedite them in the best way we knew how, and they got really nervous, and it was around the holiday time, and nerves are raw at that time, so.
You know, I'm just going to address it and not to make it more of a maelstrom than what it was this weekend. There was social media stuff, which there's always social media garbage going on about the city, but if anybody's watching, city staff does at the direction, does what they do at the direction of city council. So if, if people have a, they're upset about a decision or about a process they're going through, they need to be voting on, or talking to the council members, not, not Chaz, Tussie and Sam.
I agree. Don't use social media. That's like writing on a bathroom wall, really. Bring it to Jim's attention, bring it to our attention, but refrain from using social media. Thank you.
The other part I'll note on that, I don't think that they, we've had a request for work to be done down at the depot that has been brought forward and proposed that the council hasn't approved and allowed.
I would agree with that too.
Very similar to the windows being redone. The only thing that we as staff has tried, have tried to do is keep into context that that facility is your responsibility. And we have, we've got groups who like to see something happen. We just want to make sure that it works, flows through the council.
I appreciate that.
So I have one question, and I know right now we're in the middle of reworking the first floor of the memorial auditorium. And I know that the question's been posed somewhat behind the scenes and, and maybe not so much publicly, but does it make sense to look at that space and figure out if there's something that we can do for them now that we're in the middle of?
Renovating.
Renovating.
They, they would.
Are they against it? Are they not against it?
I, I talked to Matt, I think, I think the biggest problem with the auditorium is the parking. I mean, they'd be parking much further away than where they park now.
I mean, so I looked at, I, I was there today, and on the east side of that building, there is a lot of concrete that's not being used on a regular basis. If it was striped and solely for their purpose, is that something that makes sense, at least?
Their needs are a little bit different. They, five days a week, they use a facility, it's not just like one meeting, one day a week.
Fair enough. I just, again, I think it's one of those opportunities that we haven't looked hard enough yet, at yet, that could potentially work if we were to sit down and really think about it. Maybe, maybe I'm wrong.
I thought there was another entity in there is why they couldn't use that. Jim, you're.
Most of the space that's on the first floor is used by, it's, well, it's the Steamboat Day's office that they've used on that basis.
Which is no longer, which is no longer basically in use. A lot of what they had was damaged. But there's, they've got a kitchen in there. Um, there is other banquet areas in there that had never been heavily used, that could have been, could be used. I'm just saying there's a lot.
You'll take a lot, well, part of it has been, those, those areas, I mean, even like when we're dealing with Civic Music, they're, they have a concern for us to get stuff ready so that they have the ability to, to use it.
I think the conflict on use of the banquet room would be the BRE's rental of that facility for one, but then I think the Marine Corps has some storage of some materials that they had to pull out. There's another group that's in there too.
Was it the American Legion or somebody was there?
Some sort of a Legion organization that has storage down there, and so I don't know the, the use of the banquet room versus when I initially suggested that north side was, is it's unused. I don't, the banquet room, I think, is going to be, is planned to be used much more frequently, rented out by BRE than what would the use of the seniors would want. So I, I don't, I, that would be a conversation, I guess, for, for BRE to ask, you know, to find whether or not that could work.
Well, um, let's, let's, let's get back, let's get back to the resolution here that we have. So the resolution awarding contract, are we in favor of holding that? Okay?
Yes.
Okay, so we'll hold on that. We'll have the meeting on the twenty-third. We'll get back with staff and go from there. Uh, number three is the motion for preliminary adoption of the second reading of the ordinance amending the mayor and the city, or the mayor and the council compensation provisions of the city of Burlington, Iowa Code of ordinances. That would be, Jim?
Yeah, no change from the last time, and this just follows up from conversations that the council has had in regards to wanting to look at a way to change the compensation level. It's been the same for a few decades. Uh, this would change it from the, uh, for the council from five hundred a month to nine thousand a year, which is, what, seven fifty? Is that right? Seven fifty a, a month. Um, the, the mayor would go from that five fifty a month to ten thousand a year, uh, but it also incorporates a CPI level of increase over time. So it'd be adjusted annually, January one each year. Is that correct, Stephanie? January one, not July one? Fiscal year, July one it gets changed after, after implementation.
Anybody have any, any thoughts, any questions on that?
Well, when I voted no, um, I, I definitely believe that the future councils need something more. It's been too long. My only concern is, and are we putting ourselves, and it's not much, but are we putting ourselves in any kind of budget restraint? And no, it's not maybe this year, but as we look down the road.
Yeah, well, until twenty twenty-two.
Yeah. So budget impact of about, is it twenty thousand? I didn't really ever.
Thirty-five, wasn't it?
It's thirty-five thousand that we spend now. I think it goes to about fifty-five thousand.
Fifty-five, yeah.
So it's about a twenty thousand annual impact to the budget, and yeah, you have to accommodate it. It means that you're not spending on something else. It's, it is part of your discussion. It doesn't impact the budget that we're currently in. It doesn't impact the budget that we are working on. It will the following budget though.
Um, and that would, it'll be the second reading bill, so you know, you can, if, we'll continue to go, we get three readings on it. Okay, any other questions on it?
And I originally was no, and then I did some more research, and I found out there is a very wide range of stipends. Everything from twenty-five thousand in Des Moines, eight thousand is common, so we were on the low end. So while I'm not one hundred percent decided, it does look like in order to attract qualified candidates, we might need to think about increasing a little bit.
And that's one thing I've heard people ask me in the past two weeks, you know.
Are you nuts?
Well, no, but, um, it's been so long, will it get more candidates? Because I got to tell you, when I decided to run, I didn't even know we.
I didn't know.
We got paid, so, um, and that it would not affect me at all. I, I mean, I wouldn't want to do something that's going to affect me at all, so.
Yeah, I, I heard a lot about the perception that we were voting ourselves a raise, and that wasn't the intent. It was to attract future talent and to have it be a desirable position. Also, I feel like, you know, to be compensated for our time, I think I, I told someone if I worked ten hours a week right now, it'd be like twelve fifty an hour. And if I worked twenty hours in a week on council stuff, it'd be like, um, six and a quarter an hour. I got, I got a lot of the things that I'm giving up to do this, so it's not to benefit me, but, um, everybody likes to be paid for the work. And I understand service. I volunteer a lot and I do a lot of other things. I just want to make sure that, um, I can continue to do those things in the future. But again, this is not for me. It's for somebody in, in a similar position, so years down the road, I would like someone to, to be able to do what I'm doing and do a little more with what they have. I, I do make a lot of personal sacrifice to, to be up here and do the things I do, and, um, so I just want to put that out there. I had a lot of people saying it's typical for an elected official to vote themselves a raise, and I, I don't think that's the case.
Some other councils do it on a per-meeting basis, so I don't know if you've ever considered something like that or not, but you show up and participate.
How many meetings do you go to a week?
Okay, so is anybody, uh, do we, can, are, are we pretty well done with that for tonight?
Yep.
Okay, the proposed consent agenda, the resolution approving demolition and nuisance, or nuisance abatements, anybody have any issues?
Nope.
It looks like we're done on a couple of barrage, garages. Uh, number two is resolution for the approving final acceptance, final payment and release of retention monies for the twenty-eighteen Front Street Hawkeye Arch Sewer Repair Project. Nick?
Uh, well, we're finally complete with, upon this, uh, resolution, uh, we'll final payout to Four Seasons. Uh, to complete the project, uh, the final pay is fourteen thousand, six hundred and eighty-seven dollars. Uh, the total contract with Four Seasons totals up to two-hundred-and-ninety-three thousand, seven hundred and forty-three dollars. Uh, we had a previous contract that was terminated upon, um, the way it was bid out and the way the, the season kind of ran. Uh, that was, we had materials with the part of that contract, and that was ninety-two thousand, eight hundred and forty-four dollars. Uh, we, we paid for a replacement rail crossing that amounted to fifty-three thousand, eight hundred and forty dollars. And then we had Klingner and Associates design and then manage the, uh, the administration on the inspection of that contract.
Did you say we paid for the replacement rail?
Correct.
Those concrete pads? We didn't, we didn't pay to move the tracks, but we did put in new pads.
So we have not seen a bill from BRE, which, or BJRY, uh, for the movement of the rail. Um, and then we also have a bill from Klingner Associates for eighty-eight thousand, eight hundred and ninety. Uh, so the total, the total cost of that project is five-hundred-and-thirty thousand dollars. Just shows you the significance of one of those types of emergency, especially given the location, what kind of impact that has, and sewer funds we're used to pay for that.
All right, everybody okay? Uh, number, thanks, Nick. Number three, your backup resolution approving an agreement between the city of Burlington, Iowa, Alliance Energy Incorporated for all-night lighting service at the seven-hundred block of Maple Street between South Seventh and South Eighth.
Well, we had a request from a property owner in the area to add a mid-block light where you see the yellow, uh, the yellow pole. There's actually a pole on either side. Um, Alliance didn't confirm whether they'd put it on one side or the other. Um, I put it on the north side. It seemed like there was a little bit more room on there. Uh, there, there are currently lights on the corner of Seventh and Eighth and Maple. Um, after speaking with the police chief and knowing some of the incidents that have occurred in that, uh, block slash neighborhood, uh, I would recommend installing the street light. It costs us seven dollars, twenty-five cents a month, uh, and would just be added to our, our annual bill, or our monthly bill, rather.
I went and drove it last night, and yes, it's dark. On Seventh, the light there is one of the older styles. It has that pinkish kind of hue. I didn't know when that got old, if we could replace that with an LED, and that would light it up a little bit more even.
Yeah, Alliance's replacement method is, is once it's out, they will replace it with LED.
Newer style.
Um, I don't know if Alliance ever came to us at some point and asked if we wanted to do a, I think they did a whole city replacement for a certain bill or not, or? I wasn't hearing when that would happen.
No, we just, we had a discussion wanting to move to an, to the LEDs, and, uh, when we originally were working with them, they had no desire to move to LEDs. Uh, we became one of the first places that they finally changed that and decided that they would officially replace them all. finally changed that and decided that they would officially replace them all, uh, with LEDs as they got, um, as they burn out. However, you, we're still subject to the ones that don't burn out.
Okay. Anybody have any questions on that? No? Good. Number four, resolution approving agreement with Snyder and Associates for engineering services related to the z, design of traffic signal improvements for the Roosevelt Corridor. That's that planning thing that you've been working on?
Correct. Uh, so, uh, I believe it was last spring, we went out after, uh, an ICAP, which is, uh, it's, it's a, it's a Clean Air Act, Detainment Act. It, so by, um, getting traffic to move more efficiently, it saves on carbon emissions. Uh, we received, uh, funds to do that project. Uh, it, it was only until December that we received the grant agreement from the Iowa DOT, uh, to help with that. So we're now getting in place the design contract, uh, with Snyder and Associates. They, uh, they were the ones that initially helped us write the grant application. They did the, they have also done the traffic, uh, study for the corridor of Highway 61 for the DOT. Um, I've been in contact with them, um, about this. And the timetable, it was in the contract. Uh, it looks like we should be able to get this designed, uh, by the end of the year and kinda out to bid. A lot of the work is, is running fiber, uh, fiber optics through, and then once the equipment's in place, uh, it's kinda just tinkering with the, um, with the way that the traffic patterns are moving. But then, uh, we'll have the ability to monitor, uh, the 61 corridor, uh, at Public Works. Uh, and then we have the ability to, should we want, to add to the system, uh, with the other traffic lights. So, uh, the, the impact of their design cost is 171,000. Um, I did have, I, when we discussed with them, the, uh, what kind of work they would be doing for us, I had them do the inspection and construction, or the administration on that, uh, just because we don't have anybody that is certified to inspect any of the electrical, um, or the cabinetry type function inside of there. So I would have them do that as well.
Okay. Any questions for Nick on that, guys? Yells?
It's a neat idea.
Okay, number five, it's still you, Nick. Number five is resolution awarding contract for the 2020 Auditorium Electrical Repairs, first floor and the two lower levels, including the tunnels. Does this pertain to six too? You wanna address them both at the same time or are there separate issues?
I can. Uh, both of these resolutions are as a result of the flooding, um, and the, and the recovery of the auditorium. Um, after we installed the boiler and had some of the other stuff, we were able to move on to the electrical work. Um, we were given, the staff was given authority up to 47,000. Um, the low bid of 53,000 exceeds that, so that's why we're coming to council and hope to get that moving qu, as quickly as possible. Uh, so Dave Bazin was the low bid of 53,776 dollars. Insurance, uh, will, will be paying for the work, uh, with FEMA, uh, hopefully covering our deductible on that.
Okay.
Are you placing the lights in the, in the, um, audit or downstairs?
The first floor. They were all affected, correct? And all their switches were affected too.
So that we, we have some pre-existing issues that were there too, that we've had to live with, that this is helping to address. You've got some of the chandeliers that have parts that don't, that aren't replaced.
We will be modernizing, I guess, the, the lighting, uh, infrastructure there with a little bit more functional dimmable lights. Um, and there'll be LED as well.
And, and we had to do that. We were in a, you, you have some of those that you don't have, this, you have pieces that are missing from some of the chandeliers, cause you just can't find a, a part to put into it. So as things are broken, we've been kinda limited.
Okay, good. Uh, numbers, do, anybody have any questions on that? No? Uh, number seven, resolution approving the City of Burlington financially support an application to the Iowa Finance Authority for the purpose of a homebuyer sub-recipient program.
Sorry, I, I didn't get into the drywall section of that. That was just...
I'm sorry, yeah.
The 53,000 was for electric with Dave Bazin Electric. Um, the drywall portion of that is 71,951 dollars. Uh, we had three bidders on that. Uh, the low bid was S and G Construction. Uh, that would do drywall work in the first floor, um, the kitchen, the first floor, women's restroom, the shower, the offices, and then the janitor's room. So, uh, going in there and doing the drywall. And, and then we were able to get, since the flooring's gonna go down first, uh, the flooring was less than the 47,000 approval limit. We approved that, um, and I think it was carpet land, and they're gonna start moving on that as quickly as possible.
Okay.
So to get the flooring in there and then these guys can come in behind and start that work.
All right. Sorry about skipping that.
You're right.
Uh, resolution ba, again, approving the City of Burlington financially support an application to the Iowa Finance Authority for the purpose of a homebuyer sub-recipient program. Mr. James?
Good evening. Zach James, Southeast Atlantic Commission. Um, I'll try and cover this the best I can. This is typically, uh, Sarah Heacock's in her office, but, uh, I was gonna be here already, so she asked me to just kinda go through this. So this would actually be, um, us looking to apply for a third home grant here with the City of Burlington through the Iowa Finance Authority. It's for first-time homebuyers to do, uh, down payment assistance or rehab, uh, for up to, I shouldn't say up to, a minimum of 10 property owners. It could be more if they requ, uh, request let, each owner request less than the full amount that they could ask for. Um, anything that they do must meet the HUD income guidelines, so depending on the size of the family, they have to meet a certain income level. Uh, for the program, the application that we're looking to submit's due February 4th and has two years to be spent from the award date. Uh, as I mentioned, this is the third time that we would be applying for this, uh, with the City of Burlington. And so with the, the previous grant, um, the city had committed a local match of $2,000 per, per house at the minimum of 10 homes, so $20,000. So, uh, the resolution would basically commit to, uh, approving the application and committing the $20,000, uh, local match. And the total budget for this is actually, it's 375,000 dollars would come from the grant from Iowa Finance Authority, 20,000, uh, from the city, and then, uh, $55,000 we, uh, take from, uh, our Greater Housing Trust Fund that we administer at the planning commission. So, uh, $450,000 total. Oh, there you go. There's...
Mike, or Sarah presented on this a couple of work sessions ago, so this is a follow-up on, on that.
The council at that time had our, had, uh, verbally agreed to providing the 20,000. Um, this is a follow-up on that resolution that officially, uh, puts in place, uh, your approval of putting 20, committing $20,000 for this application.
Okay. Anybody have any questions? And where, where were we funding this out of? Remind me.
Good question.
Okay.
Uh, that'll, this is not a budgeted, uh, dollar amount. Um, we will be pulling this out of the general fund and I'll prob, probably be having, Stephanie will need to do a $20,000 transfer from here into another fund yet this year. We'll set it aside in a capital fund, cause you're not gonna need it until, my guess is next year at some point, but we wanna make sure that we have it committed and set aside. And we have the ability to, to fit it into this year's budget in the general fund.
It's a good investment, in my opinion.
Yeah, and I couldn't answer those questions. So I don't know if you usually do it as one transfer, if you do it as like per home, or I guess I don't know.
In the past, we've gotten invoices as homes go through, but I think either way...
Happen over a couple of year period, even.
Yeah.
Hey, any questions? All right, moving on. Thank you. Thanks Zach. Uh, next, uh, is resolution approving the development, development agreement, sorry, with Downtown Partners for the Community Catalyst Building Remediation Program, project at 300 Washington Street, AKA the Typewriter Shop, Burlington, Iowa.
And this really doesn't do a whole lot different than what we've already verbally gone through as we've talked about the catalyst grant. Uh, we, uh, when we did the application for the catalyst grant funds, uh, it's 100,000 from the state. There's, it's set up as a forgivable loan. If they don't get the work done in a little over a year, it's, I think it, is it July of 2021? You have to sell it by then. You have to have the, yeah. Uh, they have to have the work done before that, but, uh, they need to have it sold. If they don't have a committed buyer who is with a reasonable plan to use it, uh, by that point, that, uh, forgivable loan is no longer forgivable. Uh, the development agreement you have in here recognizes, uh, the aspect of the, the work that we're putting, the money that we're putting into it, 20,000 from Economic Development Fund that's already been approved and awarded, uh, the work that they're needing to do to bring that building up to, uh, snuff and, uh, then try to get it sold. And it also rec, is putting it into a, a signed-off document between the two parties. Uh, they're, uh, holding us harmless if they are unable to meet the terms of the forgivable loan.
Okay.
Um, we have, already have the bank's, uh, letter of credit. Uh, that's already been filed and we did that before we did the application. Um, this form that you have before you was, wasn't really something that we'd contemplated in our process until the state brought it forward and suggested that it's not a requirement, but they recommended that we have this in place between the two entities, so everyone is working on, off of the same notes.
Okay. Any questions, guys? We expect an award letter this week and we'll have a contract. Then it'll, that'll have to come before council as well with IEDA at a future meeting as well, so. Okay. I do appreciate the, the work being done on it down there that's moving, moving in the right direction. So does anybody have any questions?
It's got netting on it or something now, Steve? The fashion statement or...
They've got scaffolding.
It's the newest in mesh fashion. Yeah, uh, yeah, scaffolding is up and debris netting is in place. Uh, we met with contractor, uh, earlier today and, uh, like Eric said, we expect, uh, the city will receive the grant award letter sometime this week. At that point, we can, uh, officially hire the contractor and he can begin work. Uh, work is gonna begin on the inside first. You really can't do masonry work until the interior is shored up from basement to the roof. Um, and, and can't really do masonry work in the wintertime anyway. So I, while he's working, really won't see any visible progress on the outside until springtime, so.
Okay. Any questions for Steve? Thanks, Steve. Uh, so we're ready to move on then? Okay, great. Next would be appointments. Uh, it looks like we have, uh, the following appointments. Recommend of low-rent housing agency, Jeff Burkhardt and Ann March. They both have expressed a desire to return, so we're looking at them. Uh, also, Rachel and Dean, uh, for the low-rent housing. And then on Riverfront Committee, it looks like, uh, Sid Carter and Doug Smith are going to, uh, recommend to re, to reappoint them for a three-year term. Any questions? All right, that takes care of the work session. Let's take a, uh, five-minute break. Five, is it? Oh, wait a minute, sorry.
Yeah, just...
You wanna go through the staff? I'm, I'm...
Well, I don't know if anyone needs anything, but, but one thing that I do know, uh, in addition for this next agenda, and just a reminder from a follow-up with, uh, the presentation from Brent, Brent Dahlstern, there will be a set date for public hearing.
Okay.
Uh, that'll, we'll be placing that on consent agenda. We typically put our set dates there, unless you have a problem with that. Um, that's the only other thing that I can think of from the agenda. Did, anyone?
All right.
I'm gonna bring some food up here.
Go ahead.
I do have an additional item for next week.
Okay.
Um, it was, it got lost in my email, but there is some, there's some streetlights out on Stone Center, or Stone Gate Center out by Comfort Inn. Uh, we own and maintain the infrastructure out there. Uh, the streetlights that were initially installed were not up to Alliance. May, they would not maintain them, so they were privately operated. Alliance has changed them over and so they qualify, um, for us to, to take over under ownership. So those two will be added to the agenda. So it's fairly simple, but I just wanted to clarify that it wasn't on this agenda.
Okay.
And, just, just talking with Chief, the deer management zone, uh, it's not on here. You may have noticed that. I didn't think about it at all, but, uh, you're still just making sure that you coordinate and try to get things done within the, the time that we need to have it done for this next season.
Had to have, had to have it finished and certified by what, March 31st?
I think it's March or April, yes.
Yeah, so it's, we don't have a lot of time, but...
That would be the permit to have the deer management zone.
Yeah. Does that require three readings?
Unless you waive.
Okay. Unless you waive it.
Uh, actually, I assume that's by ordinance, that that's at least a portion of it, yeah.
I know, we briefly talked about it, but we have a committee of people putting that program together, I think, at this point?
Not yet. They'll, they'll have to get that, that together and then talk with Greg Harris from the DNR about the permitting process. And I think, uh, the ordinances, uh, and I wasn't here for the presentation, I apologize, but, um, the, the ordinance as it's written would allow us to keep it that way for an archery-only, uh, deer management program.
Okay.
I don't think we need any changes on the ordinance that's in there to, to allow that to happen here in town as long as, uh, the projectile doesn't leave the, the property owner's property. You can't shoot across property boundary lines or across city property with a projectile.
Okay.
That's the current ordinance?
Yes.
And then if we were to open that, well, this isn't on the agenda, so nevermind.
Yeah, but we can discuss it some more, but those are some of the things that I have to, uh, start going here. Been hectic week yourself, so.
Um...
Thank you, Chief.
Anything else?
Reminder, eggs and issues Saturday. So if anyone's wanting to attend, please RSVP through the chamber for that. Uh, up at the chamber, 7:30?
AM.
Yes, AM.
Breakfast starts at 7:00 AM.
Yeah. Um, legislative session has begun. Uh, today was the beginning of that. A, a couple of issues that are out there that I forwarded an email, um, from, that Clinton had sent in terms of the hotel motel, uh, tax loophole, of one of the bills that had gone through, but they never, both, both the House and Senate, but they never reached compromise language, was, uh, House File 760 last session. Um, this, the, the, the handout that Clinton has gives you an idea what the diff, what impact that would potentially have on our community if that were to go through. Uh, certainly keeps that in mind as you have conversations with legislators during this session. Um, Chief Trexel has brought, has cut me in at least a little bit in the loop of uh, different issues out there for how to potentially fund fire departments. Um, one of the things that may be out there and sponsored, uh, this legislative session, uh, would be on the ability for townships to, uh, have a little bit more flexibility with how they raise funds to support, uh, fire departments. And for us, that could potentially have an impact moving forward. Until we see legislation, um, we don't have anything really to push on, but, um, having more flexibility than the 60 cent levy limit that they have right now would be beneficial for, um, for, for all. Uh, not, not all communities are providing support out in the townships. We, however, do. Uh, it does, and it has an impact over what, whether it's them providing it themselves, uh, or trying to contract with us to be able to provide service. It has an impact on the ability to, to flexibly fund a department. Um, so it's, it's one that I encourage you to keep on, on top of. Uh, in terms of issues, those are the two that I know about. There aren't a lot of pre-filled issues out there right now. Until we see what comes through, uh, we don't really have a lot that we're saying these are, uh, priority issues for us this session at this time.
Well, I did, uh, did talk to Tom, uh, our state senator, Tom Green. He did say that, uh, the enhanced, uh, the enhanced penalty for, uh, firearm carrying by a felon is on the docket too. So hopefully we'll get some action on that. All right, so is there anything else from staff? Don, Rhonda, Chief? Chief, we get to talk to you later. Eric, anything? All right. Jim, anything else?
That's it.
Anything from staff? Or, I mean, the council, I mean, anything?
I just had a real quick correction. I was on the, on the radio last Wednesday and I mentioned that the criterium, the bicycle race called Friday Night Fever was gonna be held at the park, and that was incorrect. So I'm correcting my statement. It's actually gonna be held downtown. So that's gonna be exciting. So the night before the Snake Alley criterium, there's gonna be a criterium held downtown. And thanks for calling that, me out on that, Nick, of Nick's cycly. I corrected my incorrect statement, so. Downtown.
Okay. Any future discussion items, please bring those up. And now, let's, uh, let's take a five-minute break.